Everyone, I'd like to call to order this public work session of the Mawa Board of Education for April tenth, twenty nineteen. Could you please make a call? It's Bleecker.
Dr. Morthe. Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. Kesmarski.
Here.
Ms. Conoco.
Here.
And Ms. Baron.
Here.
I had a quick notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on April tenth, twenty nineteen in the administrative offices, sixty Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Would everyone please rise for a salute to the flag? Um, Mr. De Silva would like to. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to recess to executive session? Mr. Kesmarski, second by Mr. Wenderkowitz. Okay, may I have a motion to reconvene? Ms. Conoco, second by Ms. Ziccone. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. De Silva. Thank you.
Evelyn Slackbar, forty-three, Thunderhead Place. Sorry, I'm short. Sixteen M, the seven barrier gates, where are those going to be located?
Kyle, just jump in if I'm, if I'm, did I get this wrong? One of the security recommendations from now Steve Jaffe was to include what they're calling vehicle restraints. Right, so those are those areas where you want to add some access perhaps to an emergency vehicle, but typically you don't want through traffic too. One of those areas, Kyle, you're gonna have to jump in, one of those areas is at Ramapo Ridge, adjacent to the building, there's a planter that kind of sits in an area that could allow for an emergency vehicle to go in the back. Do you know where I'm at?
Right.
We're gonna remove that. I believe we're replacing one at the high school.
Correct.
Is the one at the high school we're replacing here in the back of our offices or the one by the field?
No, the one by, going down by the football field.
By the athletic.
By the athletic.
Yeah, we're replacing the one that's already there.
Right.
These are all, for clarification, because it doesn't say it here in case there's any confusion, these are all exterior gates, nothing is interior.
Right, right.
Betsy Ross as well?
Yes.
Right in front of where that parking area is that leads down?
Yep.
I don't believe, GW?
There are two. Yes.
Okay. On the right side of the school and that corner.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't have it all written down.
Now, are these gonna be like automated where the, they'll like, no, they're gonna just be the same manual one?
Same kind of thing, yes.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. May I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Mr. De Silva, second by Ms. Ziccone. Uh, Dr. Shone, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do, my love, I'm good. Good evening, everyone. Um, the report I have for this evening is just an update. Um, one of the things that was asked by Mr. Wenderkowitz, um, and also, uh, you, Mr. May, was, uh, external cameras for our, for our buses. And, uh, Kyle and I have started, um, researching what that looks like with the current company that we have now, um, who has the ability to put it on our buses and the cameras and what they do and what it looks like, whether it's a front, a back, um, and also a license plate reader, there's a third that goes in the back. So, we're gonna research that a little bit more, we should have an update shortly, but I did want to let you both know and the board that it was on our radar. I filled in the facilities committee at a meeting we had earlier, so we'll keep it on our radar and update you soon, but it hasn't fallen short.
And you've gotten an interim report for me, um, and right now we're looking to, uh, Chapezi to come through with possibly, possibly, a, uh, a pilot program for our district. Uh, no guarantees, but we'll see what we come up with, if the board agrees.
Right, one of the, one of the things that we need to keep in mind when we do this is, is that we currently have eleven buses, um, in our, in our district, and we have the opportunity to outfit those buses with whatever it is that we feel appropriate, and that could be external cameras. We cover ninety-two routes, um, between three or four different bus companies, including the eleven buses that we have now. So, our buses cover about thirty routes, which leaves about sixty-two routes with buses from other companies that we cannot mandate external cameras on. So, the only thing we can control, right, is what it is that we do here, we can't control or mandate other companies to do the same. They are costly, um, to do, so if you take it, like, a company like Scholastic has over two hundred buses in their fleet. For them to outfit their buses with external cameras would be very costly, and if we mandate that on a bid that we put out, then Scholastic can no longer bid on our routes and they take so many, and I'm using that as an example. So, I just think it's important when we talk about this, we can only control what we can control with what it is that we own. Sound good? Okay. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bleecker.
Okay. Um, yes, just, uh, two items tonight. Uh, one, a very brief update on the scheme of action. We had another progress meeting earlier today. Uh, things are still going, uh, well as far as a, uh, outlook for the next couple of weeks. Um, next week is gonna be a big week, they're taking advantage of, um, the break, we're looking to do a possible cutover of, uh, some electrical, um, for the building, um, leave some more equipment into place, put some equipment on the roof that needs to go there. Windows are inspected by the end of April, and everything else is, uh, progressing, uh, very well. Um, the other end of my half, just another budget presentation, which, just one moment to get it started. Okay. Um, thank you very much, uh, this is the, uh, third presentation for the nineteen-twenty school budgets. Uh, we have one more presentation that's gonna be done on our May first meeting, that's gonna be a summary, a review of the overall budget, um, and the adoption of the budget for the nineteen-twenty school year. Uh, we've submitted everything, as I've said before, to the county, uh, offices for their review. Uh, we have gotten some additional factors, so it's continuing their review, and so far it is, uh, progressing very well, uh, through that process. Today I'm gonna discuss a couple of different areas of the budget, uh, one being benefits, personnel or staffing, then operations, uh, different, uh, impact that they have on the budget. For employee benefits, uh, it's a very, uh, significant piece of the budget, um, the bottom bullet point shows up for the nineteen-twenty, it comprises approximately fifteen point eight percent of the total budget. When we speak about benefits, employee benefits, we speak about contractual benefits, uh, also health prescription, mental benefits for employees, workers' comfort compensation, social security and pension payments from the board for per se employees, as well as tuition reimbursement and pay for a few months sick time. So, many different things fall into the overall, uh, umbrella of employee benefits. With regards to, uh, personnel or staffing, um, that impact on the nineteen-twenty budget is thirty-five million, three hundred eighty-six thousand, is allocated to salaries for the nineteen-twenty budget. This does not include the benefits piece I spoke about on the prior slide. As far as the size to give, uh, an idea of the scope of the, um, staff here in Mawa for the Board of Education, we have approximately four hundred and eighty staff. Those staff are spread over three collective bargaining units, Mawa Education Association, which, um, is the unit for teachers, nurses, secretaries, maintenance, custodial, plus drivers, and nurses. Uh, the Mawa Administrators Association, which has principals and assistant principals, and the Mawa Superviseors Association for our supervisors. Uh, any employees that don't fit in those categories I mentioned are either have independent contracts or are paraprofessionals. Regarding staffing, um, our approach each year is each year staffing is thoroughly examined and budgeted to address the educational curriculum of all the areas in the district, as well as all the instructional support areas. Um, for the nineteen-twenty school year, after looking at, uh, the impact of these different areas to the budget, we have a budget that, um, proposes a point-seven FTE decrease for next year, nineteen-twenty school. Other operations, we have, uh, different areas of the budget that also, um, address a couple of different areas. Instructional support, curriculum, guidance, multimedia, professional development, they comprise approximately three point three million dollars, or four point eight percent of the budget. School operations, approximately two point three million or three point four percent. District operations and technology, approximately three point seven percent. Maintenance custodial grounds is a larger piece of the operation budget, six point three million or nine point one percent. Then we have transportation of four point one, and then instructional, uh, non-salary, not including the salaries I spoke about on the prior slide, of a little bit under three million, four point two percent.
Kyle, the, uh, transportation number, that includes, um, transportation for specialized students?
Yes, transportation for, uh, specialist students.
And?
Transportation for, uh, and support for our own fleet of vehicles, um, gas.
Parochial.
Pardon?
Parochial.
Pro, uh, yes, parochial is separate as well, um, any parochial or non-public, uh, students, plus, and transport. The last number that is in there that's important to note is aid and look, so for any students that attend a non-public school, that we do not have blessing for, and if they're eligible for aid and look, um, that is also included in that dollar.
And the maintenance custodial grounds line, I'm assuming includes utilities?
It includes utilities, includes electrical, gas, sewer, water, um, and general upkeep of, uh, of buildings, gas. Supplies, custodial, um, contract is in there as well, custodial services, that's, uh, probably one of the largest single pieces of that after utilities, for utilities, custodial, um, contract for our services.
That would include the expansion of our STEM building, maintenance custodial?
Um, it would, uh, in conversation with them, we've been keeping them up to date with the size of the building, with the timeline of the building. Um, they anticipated to be a minimal impact to custodial staff, uh, they feel that they're very comfortable supporting much of it and, and being able to maintain cleanliness of it with the support that we have. If we do have to add it, it would be, uh, instructional non-salary.
Give us an example of what?
Uh, instructional salary would be, um, supplies, textbooks, uh, the lease for the upcoming month one initiative, which is probably the largest, uh, piece of that budget. Also any other, um, instructional equipment, furniture, things like that, that we need to be instructional, that would be in the classroom for the students. And for, uh, an outlook for the next meeting, as I said before, the May first will be the last, uh, presentation on the nineteen-twenty school budget, uh, that's gonna be the final adoption of the budget, so a summary of the previous, uh, presentations, including the notes. Have any further questions for the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Fair, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Um, I want to begin with, uh, item seventeen A on the board agenda, where we have an announcement of a retirement of Ms. Stacy Azavito. Um, she's been in several of our school buildings in a range of programs as an instructional paraprofessional, and she currently works at Ramapo Ridge Middle School. Not only is Stacy well-liked by staff and students, but she also approaches each assignment professionally and always thoroughly understands each student that she is working with so that she can support them appropriately. Stacy has worked and has been assigned specifically with students to provide them with a balance of support and directness, especially as it pertains to organizational skills, which has been beneficial to many of our middle schoolers. Uh, we wish Ms. Azavito nothing but the best in her retirement. Uh, also, um, item seventeen BB introduces, uh, a clinical residency program that we will be entering, uh, with Ramapo College. Um, it serves as a local partnership, um, where it satisfies the New Jersey Department of Ed's, uh, ED TPA, Teacher Performance Assessment Requirement, for all teachers in a teacher preparation program, um, where teachers in this capacity will serve, um, as the teacher's assistant in their cooperating teacher's classroom during the fall, and in the capacity, when needed, of a substitute teacher or substitute paraprofessional in the fall throughout their designated school building, um, as needed to help improve our substitute fill rate across the district. Uh, student teachers will then complete their student teaching placement in the spring semester, as they have always done.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's, hopefully it's beneficial for everyone. Um, as you can see on our board agenda, we have started hiring for the nineteen-twenty school year, so we're entering the peak of hiring season, which is also exciting. Um, we will also have our staff highlights at our next board meeting, May first, where we will be recognizing, uh, Marcy Pestrich from Betsy Ross School, Christine Petrowski from George Washington, Ally Bauer from Lenny P Meadows, uh, Don Hayek from Joyce Kilmer, Rich Gordon from Ramapo Ridge, and coincidentally, Dan Gordon from Mawa High School. So, uh, we're excited to, uh, see them and celebrate them at our next meeting. Uh, enjoy spring break to our teachers and paras who are in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Woo-hoo, indeed.
President's report. Okay, Mr. John Pascal, principal of the Mawa High School, is proud to announce that a member of the class of twenty nineteen has been selected as a winner of a National Merit two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar scholarship. Andrew M. Heinz is the recipient of this honor. From approximately one point six million students who entered the twenty nineteen National Merit Scholarship Program, only about sixteen hundred were named semifinalists. They were designated on a state representative, representation, represent-teno, face this, excuse me, uh, in proportion to each state's percentage of the national total of graduating high school seniors. In order to advance in the competition and to be considered for a merit scholarship award, a semifinalist had to become a finalist by fulfilling several requirements that included submitting a detailed scholarship application and presenting a record of very high academic performance. All winners of about seven thousand five hundred National Merit Scholarships are being chosen from the group of approximately fifteen thousand distinguished finalists. So, congratulations to Andrew on this wonderful achievement. Uh, that is all that I have this evening. Um, do we have any board committee reports tonight?
For, um, uh, policy sixteen X, we'll see, uh, second reading and adoption of a bunch more of the two thousand series, uh, continue to plow ahead. I know that we had another meeting yesterday, so keep an eye out for more fun to come.
Community relations, if you're done, I'm sorry. Uh, our next meeting will be May first. What we've, we're working on right now, uh, thanks to Brett, is developing a trifold, which we will use to be, to be handed out at art music night, uh, family nights coming up, wherever we can, pass it out to our parents, explaining exactly what our mission and vision is with a Thunderbird think tank. Even with all the publicity we have, we have a feeling that many people, in fact, staff members, are not quite aware of what exactly is going on over here. So, it's our hope to develop this, uh, trifold, uh, and initially just hand out, physically hand out at the various meetings. Uh, you have a copy of it? It's your, it's your cue. There it is.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, anyone else? Yes, Mr. Gallo?
I have a report from both negotiations and financing facilities. Uh, in negotiations since our last meeting, we've met twice with the MEA, once on April first and once on April eighth. Uh, we are continuing to make substantive progress on, uh, achieving a replacement contract with the current contract, um, and we have our next meeting scheduled for April twenty-third, so as one of the members would say, we are continuing to trend up. Um, on finance, we had a, another meeting with Dr. Shone and Kyle on developing a capital plan and reviewing some items that, uh, have come up as a result of Dr. Shone's completing a capital plan list for the district, and we will continue to meet on that subject for a number of months. Uh, more importantly, on an, an older project, we met with township officials, uh, township engineer, township business administrator, chief, our new chief of police, Stephen Jaffe, some members of his staff this morning on the JK Mawa High School driveway traffic light, uh, in response to an engineer's report that the town had prepared, uh, by Boswell Engineering last February, they had proposed, um, a number of alternatives to increase the safety of our traffic flow at that area. Um, their primary or ultimate recommendation was for a traffic light. And so, the sort of, just to give everybody a little timeline to refresh where we've been on this, February two thousand eighteen, Boswell, um, provided the township with a report which they shared with us. Um, in August of two thousand eighteen, we met again with, um, uh, both Mike Kelly, uh, then chief of police, uh, Jim Vitale, um, some staff of here, and Gary Askelis, who's the traffic engineer for Boswell Engineering, to review sort of, you know, hey, you listed out a number of alternatives, but we basically, the primary path to mitigating the dangerous situation that exists at our, uh, driveway is to put a traffic light in. In September of two thousand nineteen, Mike Kelly, uh, presented that, uh, recommendation to the town council and repeated that presentation again in November. At that time, the town council had essentially two primary concerns. Uh, one was a queuing sub, uh, issue with, if we were to put a light in, how would the queuing at the, on Ramapo Ridge, um, affect traffic flow there? They also wanted to know what the effect of the current diversion is at the high school. And so, we met this morning with, uh, the big group, and everyone in the group can, continues to support the, um, advancement of the traffic light project as the number-one solution to improving the safety of the JK and, uh, Mawa High School driveway entrance and exit way. Um, and I think as a next step, and so, from a board perspective, you know, the finance facilities committee has been meeting on these, uh, with this group for some time, and this is really, it's important to know that this is a township project. We don't control the road, we don't, you know, the roadway is a township issue, so we can advocate, we can ask, we can get data for the township, but ultimately, it's gonna be the township, um, working in partnership with us to make this project happen. So, right now, um, based on the, um, output from this morning's meeting, the, uh, Mike Kelly is going to bring the answers on the, um, initial concerns of the council back to the council, and hopefully they will give it its due and fair consideration. Um, so, but just from our perspective, um, you know, the finance facilities committee would recommend to the board that a traffic light be the solution, and that we partner with the town on the project, so just sort of turn it over to Kim, similar to what we did last time on the cell tower, just if anybody had any serious questions or concerns or, um, negative feelings about the, uh, traffic light, you know, this would be your opportunity to voice that.
On that traffic light, is that twenty-four seven or just during school hours, operational?
It is a, the way that it's been described to us, it is a light with basically infinite levels of controls and sensing and cameras and manual control, automated control, timing control.
There's been no discussion as to when it will be operational?
The, the recommendation would be during school hours, and then it would, it would, we talked about the possibility of having it blink outside of school hours, but there were some concerns that came up with that from, you know, from the police department, um, that we can, you know, be talking about more, but there's, there are, there are a ton of options.
Yeah, and the traffic engineer is also gonna do some further follow-up study on the traffic flow there, so.
I was concerned maybe.
And, and whatever we do, we can always change.
Over the weekend, there's no traffic lights working.
Right.
It's frustrating.
It will not be a red light, green light situation at that point.
It would, that would be the type of thing where basically it's, on the weekend where there's no traffic, it would be green on Ridge Road, and then if, when the camera saw somebody come up too, you know, it would change. But there, it's, it's, it's actually a pretty good system that they're, uh, that they're proposing.
To that point, it's, it's not a county roadway, it's a township roadway, so we will ask for, uh, regulations with the, whatever the police and engineer, and the principals as well.
Right.
And it will, they'll also be able to accommodate sporting events and other things where at night, if we need to change it back from stainless green or blinking to a functional light, we'll have that ability as well.
Yeah, I'd say as someone who's on his, uh, current third year battling that, that exit, that exit, um, every morning, you know, seven thirty-five, a little after the beginning of school, um, I, I would say it's, it's, it's definitely needed, we've tried with the, the closing of the barrier because of the steam building, it hasn't, hasn't gotten worse, hasn't gotten better, so it's just as bad as it was before, that's what I'm saying.
There's been three accidents since the beginning of the year with the diversion in place.
Thankfully not.
Minor accidents.
But, you know, I, I, every morning I just, you know, look at it, and it's pretty amazing we haven't had more. Not even with students, I mean, that's, that's obviously our biggest concern, but I mean, even in the morning, we drop off adults, and we're all crazy. Everyone's trying to get to work, everyone's trying to get back to get the other kid to get off to go to school, it's just.
Yeah, I've had a few close calls, and.
Mrs. Slackbar, are you gonna take a bow?
I just want it fixed, it's the best thing.
I'm fully responsible for changing it from green, all green, the police would be in charge of that.
Yeah, it would, it would be programmed, so during, you know, during the school year, you know, whatever time period we decide before school and after school, then it would go into, when it's saying, if, if it ended up to be blinking again there, you know, there were some concerns voiced about it blinking too, so there's, there's pros and cons. But it's, uh, if they said it, there's, there would be cameras, right, the cameras, cameras would detect traffic. If there are none, it would be one way, if they saw traffic another way, it would, it it's a pretty smart system. Yeah, that's right.
This is a longstanding safety issue that hopefully will be resolved.
Sounds like the right fix. I hope.
We are hopeful.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, okay, um, anyone else? Reports? Okay, I have a report from the, um, liaison, is the liaison to the MSF. I had a meeting the other day, they had a meeting the other day, and they are in desperate need of volunteers, so if anyone in the audience would like to help them out, a few times a year, it would be fantastic, they could really use your help. Um, there will be two positions that are opening, I know that, um, Michelle De Silva and Brooke Gasly will be leaving their two positions, they'll still be involved with the MSF, but those positions will become available. Um, they have the run coming up on May fifth, um, and they also could use some help with putting together packages and, um, registration. May nineteenth, sorry, May nineteenth, sorry, May nineteenth. Um, and then they have the, uh, National Junior Honor Society Tricky Tray on June seventh, and Casino Night will take place in October on the twenty-fourth, and, um, so they've got a lot of great things going on along with the scholarships and everything else that they do, and, um, they could just really use some help, so I'm, uh, putting that out there for everyone. Please check into their wonderful organization, they really, really support our schools. Um, that is all that I have this evening. Uh, do you have any board member remarks or additional comments on any, uh, agenda?
It's been a sad week for Mawa. Um, I think I speak for the board, I offer my condolences to the Copeland family, death of their, uh, his father-in-law, and also, more important, uh, I shouldn't say more important, I apologize for that, the death of Sandy Park. Sandy Park was a long-term employee of our district, a secretary of the high school, who knew every, every kid's name. She was at every sporting events, football, basketball, uh, and really cared for the kids, and you could see that the way the, um, the internet just lit up when the news of her death, uh, became apparent. Uh, even, uh, a celebrity like Chris Raggy, who was taking the time to come and make, make a comment about that, and Ben made, also had an entry there. She was, uh, dearly loved by our family, and like, um, Scott Van den Mark, she had blue in her blood. She really loved Mawa High School and the kids there, and they appreciated that. On a happier note, yesterday, uh, Ms. Zic, Ms. Ms. Baron and Mr. Gallo and Ms. Ms. Ziccone and I attended a conference in Princeton Junction, New Jersey. Uh, I had, I handed out a white sheet, uh, which lists the presenters that were there, and also a, a website to go to, and I really, really appreciate if you go look at this website, it's excellent. I tried it today, it does work. Uh, I'm not gonna say anymore about it, I'm gonna let the other three, uh, expound and how great it was, even the balloons and the feather.
The balloons and the feathers, yeah. It was really a wonderful conference, um, and we have a lot of, um, contacts now, um, that would be useful, uh, if we, if we need their services within our district, um, especially the gentleman, um, George Scott, who gave a presentation on traumatic loss coalitions for youth. Um, it was, it was very worthwhile, I think, I think we all got a lot out of it, and, um, I would highly recommend, again, everyone to go to the website and look at the presentation.
And a couple of things, takeaways that I had were, the things that we already have in place, things like.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Perrin Academy, mindfulness program.
Those I had.
Um, we have elements of things that these folks all talked about as tools to improve, uh, mental health climate in schools, um, and I just pointed out the last speaker, Colleen Martinez, she is now a professor at Ramapo College, and, uh, she is a play therapist.
Theraplay.
Theraplay, and sunshine circles. Um, but it was, um, you know, you could, you hear these things like theraplay, sunshine circles, and you can be skeptical, but she, she linked the activities that we did very directly to, um, positive mental health interventions that, they sound incredibly simple. that, they sound incredibly simple, but you can see how effective they could be with a, uh, a student undergoing a stressful situation. So, it was, it was a day well spent.
And I'm on the E C, E C E A Professional Development Committee. We're actually meeting in May to plan our speakers for next year for the, all the teachers in Burin County. And I am going to recommend that they consider having George Scott.
The, the first speaker too, Alicia De Lorenzo, we've seen her twice now.
Yes.
She is a rock star. Uh, she's a fantastic presenter, she has, um, she's in Asbury Park, and she's made, uh, the, her programs have made a tremendous difference on the, um, well-being of the students in that district.
Yeah, I think the, uh, the speakers from North Brunswick, uh, caught me, uh, over because he, they offered multiple tools for their teachers when dealing with disruptive children, uh, and that's important. It's not, they, it's not just a case of saying the kid's the, you offer speaking to him, sending him back, and of course, uh, he continued, he or she continues the same way. That's a disservice to our children. They, they, the, the underlying causes should be, to be investigated and corrected. Uh, and, and the guy Scott was an excellent speaker. Uh, I hope we never have to use him.
Right.
But he is really, was really a great person.
I think the takeaway from that was, is it, what's the ma, instead of what's the matter with that person, it's what happened to them? And you think of it that way, it changes your whole mindset.
And, and the superintendent from North Brunswick also spoke, and he talked about how to systematize this in a district. So, it's a lot of little interventions throughout the, the district, um, but to create a continuum of, of, um, intervention, if you will. In, North Brunswick came to this from a perspective of a lot of, of bad things that happened. They had a few student suicides, they had staff deaths, and a lot of stuff converged on them at one time. And as a result, they, they really dug deep into this.
Thank you, I want to thank the board members for attending as well.
And Linda for driving.
And Linda for driving, thank you very much. Um, okay, um, I have a motion, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to thank everyone who came out to the Parent Academy last week. Um, it was very well-attended. Um, Coach Rick Wolf, who was the speaker, was absolutely amazing. Uh, I want to thank Dr. DeTuro for helping coordinate it. Uh, it's just another amazing Parent Academy. So, I know there's a couple more coming up during the school year. Um, if you have not attended one, I, I highly suggest attending whatever's coming up in the future.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a, um, motion to move on new business, Mr. Gallo, seconded by Ms. Conoco. Sixteen, um, A, uh, no, fifteen, uh, no.
Sixteen. It's a mistake.
Oh, sorry, sixteen A through B B, new business.
No minutes, no minutes, Kyle?
Uh, no, no.
Okay.
Sixteen A through B B. Um, does anyone have any questions, comments they'd like to make? Um, I do want to thank the Baldi, Enriquez, and Migliaccio families for their generous donation of five hundred dollars and express our sincere appreciation for the time and effort in preparing the baseball field for, uh, twenty nineteen season. And also thank, uh, Mr. Fremgin, is that the way you pronounce his name?
Yes.
Fremgin of Fremgin Brothers Tree Service for the beautiful handcrafted signage, um, that he donated. So, thank him very much for that. Anyone else? Do you take vote, please?
Mr. Wendrickwitz.
A yes on all except for J, I will vote present.
Ms. Ziccone.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except I will be abstaining on sixteen A, check number zero nine four five six four.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion to proceed on seventeen A through C C, Mr. Wendrickwitz, seconded by Mr. De Silva. Any comments, questions on any items?
It was recognized on seventeen Y, because Dorsey was back.
Yes.
That's great.
There may be smiling when I saw that.
Okay. Mr. Wendrickwitz.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes.
Okay, public questions or comments? Note, this section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Ms. Conoco, seconded by Ms. Ziccone.
Good question.
Anyone?
Sorry, I'm back. Hi, Anne Pauley, eighty-six West Crescent Avenue. Um, I just wanted to bring to your attention, we do have lots, several people here tonight that are concerned about the playgrounds. Not everybody feels comfortable to come up to talk, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, we are up to over five hundred signatures on the petition. I think I figured out how to send it to the two of you. Have you gotten anything?
Not received yet.
Okay, then I'll try to find a way to download it and email it. Um, also, I've been doing more research, um, and I'll send this, uh, in an email as well. So, uh, it looks like we're down to looking between wood chips and the poured-in-place rubberized surface. And there's a study from the California's Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, uh, Department that found that sixty-nine percent of rubberized playground surfaces fail to meet impact attenuation standards compared to one hundred percent pass rate for surfaces made of wood chips. The issue is the rubber hardens over time, and it's tested before when it's installed, but I don't think we run impact attenuation tests, um, you know, every few years. I know we heard that the rubber was pretty spriny, um, but just to say, there are studies that show the wood is better in preventing injuries when the children fall, which might seem a little counterintuitive. Um, also that the certified playground mulch, it's also called engineered wood fiber, is fully A D A compliant. I know that's a big concern. Um, they offer several different options. With one, you could even combine it with a, uh, polymer that can make a walkway in certain areas if you need to get from one piece of equipment to another. And also, there was a, something called the KidSafe National Playground Conference in Sydney, Australia, and two professors from the Sydney University of Technology delivered a paper called Why Bounce Is Bad. And they had seen in Australia that since the rubberized material was brought into use over the course of twenty years, that, um, the use of rubberized surfaces increased, the use of organic surfaces like wood chips decreased, but that injuries were increasing at a rate of twenty percent. So, these professors said, why is that? Again, it's counterintuitive. And they did all these physics engineering drawings, which I'll be sending to all of you, and if, they found out that the bounce actually, um, increased the injuries because you're falling down hard and then you're being sort of jerked back up. Um, so, all things to take into consideration, I think, good points in favor of the wood chips, which I'm such a fan of. And, um, I'll send that to you for your research. Also to clarify, who is actually doing the research on the material? Is it the new facilities director or is it your team? Like, who's drawing up pros and cons of wood chips versus poured-in-place?
It's a great question. I have a lot of information, um, that I did since our first conversation, um, in the beginning that I have shared with the facilities committee, um, and the research that I have, again, is both sides, right? So, for every argument, right, we can have ones that are for and ones that are against, and I have a myriad of both.
And I'll, I'm sure you look at sources, I've been very cautious in looking at my sources, and I try not to take anything that's from a manufacturer or an installer, because I feel like they have a vested interest.
Bias, right.
Um, you know, the health organizations, the scientific organizations, I kind of, uh, would look to. Um, so, there isn't a committee, say, that's doing research.
Is there a playground committee for research now?
Um, pro, it's, it's you, and you'll present it to them.
I have already throughout the years, yes, and any additional information I have, I, I will send. As if you're going to share anything with me, I'll be more than happy to share that with the board so that they have both sides, because we're not going on a biased setup, we're going to go with what we have determined is best at the time.
And I also wanted to remind, uh, when I had sent in two thousand seventeen, the, the attachment that gave the breakdown of the costs for the mulch and the rubber, um, I noted in the email I sent that the, the play, the facilities director had said that those numbers were not valid anymore, that was their preliminary write-up. Um, and not, I know you had referred to it, just not to take it as, um, fact. That was their preliminary estimate, and the numbers didn't ref, you know, the numbers that they thought it would be
Changed.
Is not, yeah, is not what it ended up being.
I'm pleased to know, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Just out of curiosity, about how many incidences are there of children falling off the playground equipment, do we know?
We do. Um, we do have reports in regard to that, but I have no idea how to answer that question with you now.
Okay.
There has not been an influx one way or the other regardless of, of surface, even though I know, you know, Mrs. Pauley is talking about where there are more incidences. We haven't had an influx to a point where it's reached me, that I said, oh, my gosh, we really need to do something because we have kids getting hurt on the daily.
Okay, 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 thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, all right, may I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Mr. Copeland, seconded by Mr. Gallo, and may I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. De Silva, seconded by Ms. Conoco. Thank you very much, thank you all for attending.